Okay, we are gonna go ahead and call Amin to order. It is Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes for reports from State Department?
Yes, we have the Treasurer's August 2025 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a community voices advisory board meeting tomorrow, special learning center grant open news Thursday, independent living resource center trivia night fundraiser Thursday evening, Saturday, Old Munichburg, Oktoberfest, South Jefferson City. I think that's about it.
Tomorrow I have a Midmore Regional Planning Commission meeting in Ashland. And then Friday, there is a juvenile advisory meeting. That's what's on my agenda.
Well, I had lunch in the governor's mansion today with the captain crew of the USS Jefferson City. I got special dinner on Saturday. Saturday, I've got down, it's one of our IT director, it's his birthday.
Whoa.
Yeah. So anyway, everybody needs to call him up and sing happy birthday to him.
He likes an hamburger elber, he likes that.
Then on Saturday also is MU homecoming, and I have the USS Jefferson City crew being recognized on the field before the games. Okay, that's it. Commission comments? Okay, bids and contracts, approval and signing of contract amendment for MODHSS for the maternal child health.
Good morning.
Good morning, Arne.
This is the renewal for the last year of this contract, maternal child health services that pays for a couple staff. The focus is safe sleep. I asked that you sign this contract renewal.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign a contract amendment from MODHSS for the maternal child health.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval and signing of universal KAMA DevNet contract.
So on the ninth, I met with DevNet, and they did a demonstration of a KAMA that we can use for the sales comparison analysis, which basically allows us to program an automated valuation model to value property on a mass scale using the sales comparison analysis. Also, we'll include the cost approach and the income approach. We already have the cost approach, but it'll be the new version of that. And so just want to be able to do that.
Tim, some folks may not know what KAMA stands for.
Computer assisted mass appraisal. So it's an automated valuation model. It gives us the ability to basically go in and program the system to say, okay, if a property is located, if the subject property is located in this neighborhood, we want you to go out, and it's this many square feet, and it's this old, then we want you to go out and look for comparable sales in these neighborhoods that meet these criteria. And once you pull up those comparable sales, we want you to make these adjustments for square footage, for car storage, for lot size, whatever that might be. And then basically, you hit a button, and it goes and goes out and searches for those comparables, makes those adjustments per our instructions, and tells us, based on the sales comparison approach, this property is worth somewhere between $150,000 and $180,000. You've got the cost approach there to look at as well. So we would go in individually and reconcile the data that we have. But you don't have to go in and say, okay, I want, I'm looking for comparable sales, and now I wanna, I don't like that comparable sale, I want to make this, you know, it's just too cumbersome to do it on an individual basis. So DevNet has had this, does have this. And if we can add this to our system, we would be able to utilize it. I mean, this would be a game changer as far as valuing property.
Do you have, would you hazard a guess as to what percent of the residential sales that occur in Cole County? What percent of those sales do you get a number from either the seller or the buyer?
So when I started, as of the end of August of 2025, it was reported to me that our comparable sales database consisted of 180 sales, which is minuscule. I mean, and so since there's no certificate of value in Missouri, since no one is obligated to disclose their sales price to us, we only, we send out questionnaires. And let's say there were, you know, thousands of sales, the only ones that we can confirm are 180 of them. So that is a very small comparable database from which to work. But we do, we can go back and use historic data. We can go back, use the sales that took place in '24, '23, '22, '21 to help us establish a value to compare an apple to an apple.
So you gave us the numerator of the fraction is 180?
That is correct.
What do you think the denominator is?
Thousands. I mean, there's, Jeff, you're a realtor. Would you say there's thousands of real estate transactions in Cole County in a given calendar year?
Not lately. We haven't had that many homes on New York.
Well, I'd say there's probably getting close to that, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, hundreds.
We're missing out on a lot of power.
I'd say we're getting, I'd say, you know, maybe 5% to 10% at the most. And we are working on our questionnaire to make it a little bit easier for the property owner to fill it out and get it back to us. We're trying to make it a little bit. Hey, just give us the sales price and the sale date. You don't have to tell us if you're on a septic or a lagoon, you know, and then we can take that data from there.
Now, you attended an assessor's conference before you took office, or have you been?
I went to an assessor-elect.
An assessor-elect, okay.
That is correct.
Did they talk about they're gonna go bombard the legislature with this certificate of sale, a reported sale again?
Yeah, I mean, there's an attempt every year to have certificate of value passed in Missouri, but the realtors push back on that very hard. And I'd say the probability of that is not good. But that would definitely, if we had a bigger, if we had all of the comparable sales from which to analyze our data, you know, there's nothing we couldn't figure out. So that would be very good to have.
So do we have a contract, or we do have a dollar amount?
Yes, I forwarded the contract. It's in the neighborhood of $7,500, but I did send it, yes.
You forwarded to the commissioners?
I did, I forwarded to Harry and, can't remember who else, sorry.
No, it's right here. Have you guys seen that? Did you get anything on that?
I saw something come through, but I don't remember if there was an actual.
Jill, did you review them?
You reviewed what?
That contract.
Oh, it's the DevNet deal?
Yeah.
Do you have it anywhere? You got an email with it on there, Jill?
I do, if I could find it.
I thought Justin showed it to me. Okay, because we had a question about bidding, but it's on top of the other bid. I don't know that you sent it to me.
It would have been the sender of what I forwarded.
You might have been a system.
This is a total cost of $7,522.20?
Yes.
Universal KAMA pricing?
That is correct.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve and execute the contract with DevNet for universal KAMA pricing at a price after the discount of $7,522.20.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bid awarded contract signing of 2025-28 EMS Collection Services.
We've been at our EMS Collection Services for delinquent ambulance service accounts. There were two vendors that submitted a response. We are recommending to award it to RTR Financial Services with regular account fee of 8.9% and legal account fees of 16%. And I do have a contract ready for signature today.
Did you see the bid? Okay. I'll make a motion to award the bid and sign the contract for the 2025-28 EMS Collection Services to RTR Financial Services.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of media com agreement and farm for the Pringer Juvenile Center.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is a continuation of evaluating our current internet contracts. This all stems from Lumen quadrupling the prices on our current connections. So I've been going through trying to find an alternate, at least temporarily, for the Pringer Center, since I know it's gonna eventually be moving. But anyway, I went through and based upon previous vendors and what they proposed, I want to put in the same connection, this media com connection, as I am out the health department. It is, the recurring fee is gonna be $155.94 with the one-time setup fee of $174.95 and as compared to roughly $800 a month. So, and this would be transparent to the Pringer Center. I'll do all this on the back end, so. I would just ask for approval of signing contract. Jill has reviewed it.
You got the agreement for it?
That's a big difference.
It's a big difference.
Good, good, thank you.
Okay, good. Make a motion to approve and sign the media com agreement for the Pringer Juvenile Center.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a sticker for you. An X mark system.
New business accounts payable review?
I will ask for approval accounts payable. I think we're gonna have three invoices in there that need to get paid.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable per review.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, West Green Enterprises LLC resolution. Bo West had contacted us about filing his application with the state of Missouri for additions at Cedar Ridge Apartments and upgrading the existing apartments. So we did like an emergency resolution. It's gonna give him three points. And basically, we are going to waive the permit fees for a total of $1,350. And that's all we're doing for it anyway. We do have a resolution.
I'll make a motion to sign the resolution with West Green Enterprises LLC.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Emergency purchase, a superior opening. This is the door at the Pringer Center, and we did an emergency purchase just to get this door on order. So we just need to approve it.
When did we do this, last week?
Yeah, yeah.
And this is a, Toby, do you want to speak at all about the emergency nature of this expenditure because of the safety and so forth that is necessary?
There's a door at the Pringer Center that needs to be replaced urgently due to the level of dysfunction that it's at at this time.
I went and looked at it. This is one of the original doors from when it was built back in the 90s?
93.
93. And I mean, it's the jam and everything, it's just shot. It's like, no, this is not so. I sent you guys an email, and we did the emergency, but it's, again, we've got our money's worth out of that door.
Well, the door needed to be replaced. I'll take your word on that. And we had two proposals. One of them had a lead time of 10 months, and that was because of how far out they are to do the install. This is kind of one of my thorns in my saddle. We've got a maintenance crew. This door, we can buy $1,750 roundabout price. So we got $3,750 that we're using on labor to put this door in. And I just think this is something that we should be able to handle ourselves, especially at that price, because that's three times the amount just for install. So I don't know if you've looked at it, Greg, if it's something that...
They're gonna have to order the jam in place. I'm not a pour mixer. I don't know exactly how to put those doors in like that. If it's a wooden door, wooden door, I can put those in.
It's an exterior door, I'm just...
It's fitted in concrete, and I'm not a concrete person. I'm not, I probably could put it in, but I could be there probably two months.
It's a jam, it's rotted out, it's...
I don't have concrete tools to cut concrete stuff out.
I'm gonna venture, say you don't have to cut any concrete. I mean, if replace doors that are poured into concrete, that their frames are in there. And the price tag on this said $3,750. Why do we have maintenance if we're calling somebody to do this every time? And that's just where it's been a burr under my saddle. So, I mean, we already approved doing this, it's gotta be taken care of. But this is just what pisses me off. Excuse my language. We can move on, I said my piece.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency purchase with superior opening for the door at the Pringer Center.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can you skip to the last one?
Okay. The assessor office rewiring.
So I've got a, some sort of a server?
It's a black box.
It's a black box.
It's like a...
It looks like a wine fridge. It looks like a wine fridge. I was really hopeful that's what it was when I started. But it sounds like a jet engine idling all day long. And quite honestly, like, I can't, you know, it affects, you know, doing business in the office. So I was wondering if we could just move it downstairs and not have it right in, you know, right in the front of my office there. I mean, it's in my, in the assessor's office, the physical office, and it's just all day, every day, and I might lose my sanity, so.
So do we know what it is?
Yeah, so what he's referring to is basically, at some point, it was decided before my tenure to make the assessor's office a network closet as well. So it's got the patch panel, it's got the DVR system in it, and it's got the switches and battery backups. So anyway, as part of our MVR project that we had wired some time ago, we actually installed a network closet down in the maintenance room of the Carnegie Building. And so when I was talking to the assessor, I said, we basically would have to pull all the wire that's currently ran to that location and move it to the new location. And I quoted him, I think I said something like three grand, but I was low on that. It's 19 runs and for a cost of $7,320. So that's the ask, is if I can have Meyer Electric get in and get those cable runs done, and then we can get that out of his office.
I don't want to die on this hill. If we need to keep it, we can keep it. I'm just saying, it does affect.
Oh, we got room down there forward. It makes sense to have it down there instead of in that room. I asked Brian about it earlier, too. I saw some emails. I think he went over and actually saw it, heard it.
Well, the first day I visited with you, which was your second, no, yeah, your second day on the job, the day after Labor Day, which was your first day of the job, you asked me what it was. I said, it's a black box. But it was humming along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It also generates quite a bit of heat.
And it does generate heat as well, so.
Well, you've got to rack downstairs for that stuff anyways, so.
We do.
I assume we'll pay for this out of the assessment fund, which has a balance that can handle this request. You have visited with Meyer Electric?
I have.
Is that all it takes right now? Is that because, or do we?
They have the contract.
Yeah, they have a contract with the county already. Perfect, yep.
I'll make a motion to engage Meyer Electric at a price of $7,320 to move the black box from the assessor's private office to the lower level of the Carnegie Building.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Just don't come back and ask for a wine.
Well, I was just gonna ask for the wine, but I think that's okay.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion of surplus funds plan.
If you don't mind, I have to get Larry Vincent to come back up here.
Do we need him up there? He sent some emails about this. Let's see if I can find that letter. If he wants to be up there, that's fine. I'd refer him. He said he had interviews today or something going on, so.
Is this as a result of a property sale?
Yes, the excess funds from the tax sale.
I don't know if you can do the emergency purchase for the railroad?
Well, we're gonna table the emergency procurement. Rail spur repairs, we're tabling.
He's on his way.
Say if he couldn't make up, I think these are pretty self-explanatory.
It is, and he sent, but I thought he sent on there, tell us, to tell him when we enacted this, but I thought he said we would do it next week, but that it doesn't matter. We already know the numbers, don't we? I think this sale has taken place.
I thought there was some question about something he was saying yesterday. Yeah, it wasn't almost. But this is a financial company asking for it versus the homeowner.
I think it is someone who has, who maybe inherited the property?
I thought it was a bank that was wanting, that asked for it, because there's still a lien.
Did we receive that yesterday in the mail?
I didn't, I didn't get anything, but Larry was trying to explain it to me yesterday.
I thought it was an individual. This might be a different one than, because, you know, this one was the individual asking for the overage.
And I may have it wrong, too.
But I don't have it verified by Larry, so he's on his way up, so it'll be fine.
So is that railroad spur, is that on next?
That's gotta be tabled, Toby, yeah.
Okay.
They still have work to do.
That's fine, I didn't know.
They had to wait to get some flaggers or something, because they were doing it close to the main line, and it got pushed off a day or two. Or it's taking that much longer. I think he was on the wait until he had an actual price.
There's Larry.
You're up.
Yes, sir.
You've been holding up the commission.
Sorry, apologize.
Is this the Frueg, the Del Sur?
There's actually two of them. One of them is Frueg. The other one I actually sent to Eric, and I thought he was bringing it to you all.
So is that this one?
Frueg is the top one.
And is that the one, that's the one you sent to me?
That's the one that I sent to you. But since it says surplus.
I've got the copy, if you said I did.
Funds, since it didn't specify on there, I wanted to bring this other one up, because it started back in August. They're both seeking the overages. They didn't want to redeem the property. The last one, I kind of told you what's going on with the gentleman that owns the house, and this is, this will help him hopefully find a good path to move forward. The lady that bought the house a year ago has been excellent to work with. She's letting remain in the house until he finds a place to go. And Gretchen got in contact with somebody with the Marine Corps League that got this guy in contact with somebody at the VA that can help him. He's got a real severe case of PTSD. He doesn't go out unless it's at night. And he has a dog that takes out walking every night. He actually lives over by Jan, so she's familiar with what's been going on there. And has worked hard on getting us, figure out how we can take care of this. So that's the first one. $47,646.70 would need to be transferred from the treasurer to the collector's office, so we can issue a check for that. The second one, this gentleman redeemed the property, and since he redeemed it, he's entitled to that surplus to use towards the redemption. And that's $40,233.80. And he actually filed it against him August 25th, and I had emails with Eric on the 26th, and I asked him, you know, to submit a check to us, and he said he wouldn't do it until you all approved it. And for some reason, I thought he was gonna bring it to you all for the approval. And evidently, that didn't happen, so. So I'm asking for both of these to be approved for the treasurer to release its runs to the collector's office to pay them out.
And you don't see a problem with either one of them?
No, I don't see a problem with either one of them.
Can we just do this by their address? Can we just say, I'll release it of the two addresses? We don't have a parcel number on the one.
We do on... Yeah.
We got addresses on both. Is it okay to do it with?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that the treasurer release to the collector the funds from the...
Surplus non-acc.
The two excess funds from two tax sales for these two properties, 1510 La Cienega Court and 1115 Winston. Is it court?
Court.
That's my motion.
Okay, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it.
So we are going to finish business. Discussion of 2025-23 general cleaning and janitorial services.
This was just on the agenda last week, and we put it back on there today for discussion and how we wanted to move forward with these services.
I don't think it's going anywhere, so we probably have to reject them. Unless you guys have some other ideas. guys have some other ideas.
No, I, I probably along with you on that, Jeff. I, I visited with Craig yesterday, and we, we touched on everything from Public Works, Sheriff Health, Juvenile, Courthouse, Carnegie, the auditor, the treasurer, EMA, EMS, all those areas, and how are we doing it today? How would we do it tomorrow? I guess this one is kind of coming up for issue, issue is really because of one spot in a way, right? It's probably works, who is losing what they have. But I don't see us saying because one out of, I don't know, 10 of our locations or our footprints has got an issue right now, we need to necessarily modify the other nine or how many there are. So I agree with you there. We just got to figure out a way to solve the issue out at Public Works at this point. We're losing the outside contractor for that place as of...
I, I don't know the official date. They were going to work with Eric until we got it figured out, but there will be a bid in the paper for just Public Works for cleaning.
I thought maybe they were going to take care of it themselves. How many hours a week was that?
For, well, how much do you clean out there?
For Public Works.
I think it's a couple hours a day, two to three days a week. I think Eric said he would do that, but I don't think...
I'm going to bid that out. I just, I don't see why.
We can pull it, I guess.
Yeah.
If we're not going to use any of these services and we're rejecting these because of the prices, I guess, then I don't understand why we're going to bid it out for Public Works.
When, when we did ask for bids, what was the nature of that ask?
For cleaning, the cleaning purposes? For Public Works specifically, I think it was their bathroom, their cafeteria, or not cafeteria, their break room with the kitchen and just that main entrance way and not back in the shops or anything like that, emptying the trash, nothing, nothing too crazy.
Which is what we've had, right? That's what's being, that's what's ending.
Yes.
You can go ahead and bid if you want to. I don't think our prices are going to come up where they were at with this service that we had before, because this is somebody that knew somebody, and I think they were kind of doing it just for some extra work in the area or something. We were short on staff at the time when we did this. I just, I don't, I don't see it going anywhere, so.
What would you like to do today?
I would reject these bids and then not bid the Public Works one. Well, first and foremost, I do would just reject these bids. I will make that motion to go ahead and reject the 2025-23 general cleaning and janitorial services bids.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But did you say you already have the other one about the bid?
It's ready. It's going to be posted this week, so it's not, no one can see it yet. So I can just pull it off the website and find.
I would, I wouldn't bid it. I'm just wanting to, so. If y'all want to bid it and see where it comes out at, it's two to three days a week and two hours.
I think it's two hours.
That's kind of what I was thinking, too.
I know it's two to three days a week, but how long? I'm not 100% sure. I think two to three hours.
And, and you, you could see that perhaps being done one of a couple ways? One of the Public Works personnel doing it, or...
I think Eric had thrown it out there.
I don't think he wanted to. I'm speaking out of turn here. He didn't want to do that, but that was an option that he didn't bring up.
But we also, like I said, we didn't have full staff when we bid that out, and we had somebody come to us with a, a deal. So I don't think we're going to get a deal, not the way these bids came in. And I don't see, we've got a maintenance crew. We should be able to take care of it, so.
I think Eric has had a couple people he's talked to, so we might just kind of wait and talk.
The, the current provider has said they will, it's not a, we're turning out the lights to hide kind of thing.
Right. They said they'd work with them, but I don't know how long, how much grace they'll give us if we keep saying, pushing it off, they'll probably...
I think Ryan Voish had found this company, and so, but it's been a while. But we'll just, when Eric is back next week, our emergency will ask.
So take the RFP that I've already, don't even do anything with it until you guys talk with Eric?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
So that's fine.
Just, yeah, just hold off. We are done.
That is a tough one, Greg.
Yes, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following personnel issues under 610.021 subsection 13.
Second.
Well called, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
PR ma'am.